... Please stand for the flag. The title is "The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." For so unto the overcoming reading act of Chapter 31, 1975, the meeting that is duly advertised in the Everett from Fresh issue of January 21, 2014, all municipal clubs of the Councilships of Boroughs to visit the regional high school districts have been duly notified of the requirements of the closing of notice that they have. Communications are on file with the Board of Directors. Your attendance is required.
So we are wrapping up the summer, which is quite cool, although as I look out at the audience, I see a lot of tanned faces staring back at me, so that's a positive. A few items to note: each year, the third week in August at the Freeland Regional High School District is Supervisors Week; that's when our ten-and-a-half-month administrators all return to the buildings, and usually that week encompasses a lot of real terrific work for the scope of the subsequent school year. This year, we did a number of professional development activities and provided a number of opportunities for some dialogue with those folks, including a full-day overview; there are changes to student growth objectives, you know, where teachers set their standard of how they will show student growth over time, and if you recall, from the last meeting, the state reduced those percentages a bit in a teacher's final evaluation. But Dr. Moore's office and CNI led a full-day overview of the new SGO process, working with our supervisors to make sure that they can effectively lead that process for our teachers upon their return, and then really starting to lead the stage, set the stage for opening up the Marzano model this year into a more thorough examination of, you know, what sort of teaching and learning is occurring in the district, and I don't want to use, I probably do use too many acronyms as it is, but in terms of the depth of knowledge and what activities are appropriate for students in higher level, and I don't like the term rigorous, but what would be perceived as more rigorous classroom environments. And then we also had a two-day workshop for our in-class resource pairs that were, we had a number of administrators, and I think somewhere around 20 or 24 teachers participate in that together, so really setting the stage. We did a lot of work last year with our in-class resource pairs; these are the folks that teach integrated classrooms with classified Gen Ed students, and it was a real district push last year, and we're opening up this year, continuing that push, and have, in our master schedules, have really tried to focus on at least scheduling common planning time for these folks to work together and to collaborate, and so sort of the hallmarks of what effective in-class resource and effective co-teaching looks like were really the focus of those two days. We've also had a lot of ongoing curriculum development from supervisors of the same disciplines from across the district, working together to make sure that we get all of our curriculum documents done that need to be revised for September, and so that was a lot of meaningful work this past week. Our guidance supervisors were here throughout the course of the week as well; they received some refresher training from Mr. Toscano and his team on 504 compliance, you know, HIB compliance, and all of the sort of mandates that they need to manage within their offices. So it was a positive week, a highly productive week. As we move forward, this week, the principals and I are sitting down tomorrow; we have a marathon meeting with about 47 items on the agenda; that'll be a long day where we'll make sure we're all on the same page about any changes across the district for the start of the 2014-15 school year. And we also have this week our eighth-grade transition ceremonies that are occurring throughout the high schools, so our folks who are incoming ninth graders, I think we have a real rich program to help acclimate those folks to our buildings; that's all occurring, I think Freehold High School is actually, was this evenings, and then most of those are occurring on Thursday. Each year, prior to the start of the school year, the last week of August, I'm scheduled with Mr. Boyce and Mr. LaGravenus; we do a real thorough walkthrough of all six high schools prior to the opening of school, just to make sure that we are where we need to be to, you know, welcome back about 11,500 students in early September. So that will happen this Wednesday; we've had an awful lot of work that I've gone over with some of the capital projects. Freehold High School in particular, with the new piping, you know, every hallway, you know, if you could imagine walking through every hall, every single hallway in the high school and having the ceiling be open, that's what the high school has looked like this summer. We've had an eight-person crew there since late June, working all day, every day, to make sure that we're ready to open on September 2nd, and we are, so we're on time with that, and that was the biggest lift for the summer, certainly. Our capital projects, and Mr. Boyce, you can chime in on some of this, but you know, our tracks are on time at Manalapan and Freeland Township; we had a minor issue at Manalapan High School with some areas that were, of the track that were not, that needed to be patched along the way, and some real extensive legwork with the architect and our legal counsel, and some back and forth with the company doing the work, but we've ironed those kinks out, we're moving forward. We're, the only area where we've been concerned with the timing of the projects is our roofing projects, and we're on the company that we've contracted with to make sure that the work that needs to be done is done, but we also want to be careful if there's projects that are going to disrupt the school, we may need to alter the timeline of some of those projects, so have I missed anything on?
Yes, I'll cover some of that in the Finance Committee report as well.
Okay. And then, obviously, our, working toward our opening day on September 2nd, and the convocation, which is one of my favorite days of the year, it's the one day of the year where we get the entire district together, and so the theme of my address this year will be challenges; I like the theme at each year, and I've got some, I've got some pretty good tricks up my sleeve for that address, so I'm looking forward to it. We're ready to roll.
Board reports, Finance, Mr. Boyce.
Yeah, so on behalf of Mr. Messinger, who is not with us at the meeting tonight, we met, the Finance Committee met on August 19th, and we, it was mainly to take stock of where we were in a number of different capital projects, many, Mr. Sampson has mentioned along the way. The HVAC work being done at Borough, there's also work being done roofing at Marlboro and Freehold Borough; that is something that we're addressing very strongly now, and we'll look at all options available to us from this point forward, with of course impact on the school year and the school day, taking primary consideration. Also, tracks at Manalapan and Township; the original scope of these two tracks was different from the get-go; Township was a complete tear-up and redo; Manalapan was in a position where, you know, a portion, a lower portion of the sub-base was determined that it's something that we could maintain and build on top of it there, and we did have unforeseeable conditions about the scope of patching that may need to take place there, so we worked through that, but both of those projects are underway, and if you remember, they are designed to happen in two stages; it's difficult to find a period of time to do a track between the end of spring track and the beginning of football because of the curing period that's necessary, so very often for track repair, you have to do that in two pieces. But we're moving along nicely in those also. Additional capital projects are moving, many of them under the Energy Savings Program that the Board approved back in April; they include lighting work, which is currently out for bid, and then right behind that, some additional HVAC work, nothing quite as complicated as Mrs. Jewell's dealing with in Borough at this point; that was the most complicated part. This point, it's a lot of boiler room, high-efficiency boilers in for our older boilers, and then some additional roofing work that will be teeing up for next summer. Other items discussed by the Finance Committee included hiring of engineering professionals for the Colts Neck Waste Water Treatment Plant, and what our history is there, what we're looking for in the proposals that we received; we're still working through that; staffing positions, both in the business area of the operation as well as transportation; we spent some time on transportation; this is the time of year that transportation is an important topic and a hot topic in the district, so we talked a little bit about how we address those concerns, and that's a summary of the Finance Committee meeting.
Policy.
The Policy Committee met this evening; we have on the agenda this evening the second read of several policies, including, I think, the most significant one of that group, the electronic communications that was mandated by the state regarding how staff are to interact with students. As I mentioned in the last meeting, the most significant work on our end administratively is to make sure that many of our coaches and/or advisors have Freehold Regional High School District email accounts to communicate in compliance with those new requirements, and that work is ongoing, and it will be a topic of discussion in my meeting with the principals tomorrow morning. In terms of first reads, we have a number of policies on, that we discussed this evening, including home instruction. The state, significant change in the sense that typically on, when a school district provides home instruction, you have historically been mandated to require a certificated teaching staff member in the discipline in which the home instruction is being delivered, so if a student needs Algebra I home instruction, I must be a math-certified teacher to do that. I think, given, you know, what in the past decade or so, a significant increase on the demands of home instruction in school districts for a variety of reasons, that is a very difficult process to always ensure that you can find a certificated staff member in that specific discipline. The state, I think, has recognized that, and they've relaxed the requirements that is now a certified teacher, so I may be a physics instructor who certainly has the math background to provide a student one-to-one instruction in Algebra I, for instance. So what that does is it gives, it gives districts more flexibility in terms of how they staff their, their home instruction and how they approach meeting the needs of their particular district, so. We also talked, there were a number of other policy updates on there. Intervention and Referral Services, what is known as INRS, which is really more of a, the policy's more of a specific terminology change; that group used to be known as the Core Team, so that language has been updated, and INRS is really a safety net in schools for students that may be falling through the cracks in some way, exhibiting needs, not acting as themselves, work missing, maybe not coming to school, a teacher or another adult in the building notices this, can refer these students to INRS to take a look across the spectrum of all their classes if there's some commonality there, and it's really intended to just help catch kids who might be falling through the cracks. Policy updates around attendance, pupil suicide prevention, you know, typically the state mandate is that educators, teaching staff members need two hours of suicide prevention training every five years, I believe; we provide certainly more than that each year at the opening of school; it's a topic that's addressed with the faculty; we also have a online video program that staff have to sit through and answer questions related to that, and then we provide a number of services in our schools if a student is, obviously if there's a fear or a concern that the student might hurt themselves or hurt someone else, so I'll look to that. As far, to go back to attendance briefly, the major shift this year from a school perspective, and the attendance policy only talks about excused and unexcused absences, and we had a lively conversation on what does that mean exactly, and basically, every absence, even if it's excused, counts toward the total days that you're allowed to be absent in school. So the threshold in, for New Jersey, for chronic absenteeism is 10%, which translates to 18 days. So students that are absent more than 18 days face, you know, the prospect of potentially losing credit for a course and the such, their appeal processes, and obviously there are oftentimes extenuating circumstances to absences, but just in terms of, from a district perspective, we've altered some of our attendance practices and for this school year to make sure that we're shifting from 20 days to 18 days, so that doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot in terms of potential credit loss for students, so we want to make sure that we do this effectively and that we're communicating over the course of the year to mitigate any excessive absentee issues. Also went through suspension and, you know, the difference between a long-term and a short-term suspension, a long-term suspension being more than 10 days, and there are some other policies on there, in particular Weapons and Firearms, which had traditionally been grouped under one policy, which have now been broken out into their own policy, and in the cases of a student having a weapon or committing an assault, you, the suspension parameters are different; if a student commits an assault with a weapon, you can suspend that student for up to 30 days; that's much more significant than what a normal long-term suspension is, no more than 10 days. Anything after five days on a suspension, you must provide home instruction; we went through some of the nuances of what that, what that looks like in the particular policies, and there's some language change and some rephrasing and some additional language that will, that will populate these policies prior to the second read in our September board meeting.
Curriculum.
We met today, and we've been looking at our magnet program, and the students who apply, and the students that we accept, and looking at what percentage of the students that we accept actually end up enrolling in that learning center, and we found that the percentage has remained fairly steady over the last six years, and we can use this as an indicator of how well we're successfully attracting the students that we believe are the best for these programs and having them actually enroll in our schools. When you look at the data, you see that we have a very high yield in the ROTC program at Colts Neck and at the Fine and Performing Arts Program in Howell. Two of our most popular programs are MedSci and Science and Engineering; they also happen to be the most selective programs that we have, and the programs with the lowest yield. So we see a lot of our students who get accepted to MedSci or Science Engineering ending up going either to a county voc, like Biotech or High Tech, or going to another learning center. So the CNI office and the Learning Center and Academy supervisors are looking at this data to see what can we do to make sure that the students that we accept end up coming to our schools. Some of the ideas that we're going to be looking at are going further into the K to Eights to broaden the pool and kind of just increasing the exposure they have to our programs. There are some things that we can address, so when they did interviews with parents who, students ended up going to different school, there were comments like they preferred a smaller school size, well, that's not something that we can really control on our end. Some parents preferred not to have a comprehensive high school, which is again, another thing that we can't really work on, but there were some comments that we could address, such as they wanted a safer environment, or they had heard about the voc, the vocational schools in the media more, and so felt that they had a bigger presence. So those are some of the things that came out of that survey. I know some of our current programs are connecting graduates at the open houses, so incoming students can see, oh, look, this is, you know, someone who successfully went through this program, and this is, you know, they're at Princeton, or they're at whatever university now, so kind of connecting where you could end up with, you know, come to our schools, et cetera. And, I mean, our programs are amazing, so if we just compile the right data to show that our students are excelling far beyond what the public may realize, that's another way we can increase, you know, media coverage and stuff. We also looked at, looked to track enrollment in mathematics to see whether our students were increasing the level of mathematics that they were taking over the course of their high school career, whether they were staying at the same, or whether they ended up decreasing into a lower-level math course. When Dr. Moore looked at all the data, there were over 400 different tracks that students faced, which is overwhelming both for a student, but also for an administration that's looking to, to address, you know, to make sure that our students are achieving their potential in mathematics. We found two specific dips right after freshman year for students who took Algebra I, and right after junior year after students took Algebra II. We also saw that students who identified as Black and students who identified as Hispanic saw a higher percentage of students who ended up descending throughout their course of their four years in our district. So now that we have the data, the supervisors are taking it to look at how can we streamline the options students have for mathematics, so we don't have over 400 tracks, and how we can encourage folks, how we can support our students better so that they don't descend in level, whether it be because of ability or an unwillingness to challenge themselves. So we're continuing to look at that, and at the very end of our meeting, we didn't really get to flesh it out, but we're beginning to look at the required testing a student has to take over the course of their four years. We've had a lot of changes in terms of Park and Hasbro going away and various other tests, so we're looking to make, to see, over the course of the four years throughout the entire school year, are our students getting hit with too many tests, and how can we make sure that, you know, we don't focus about, just on the tests, but actually focus on education.
So just, just to add to Ms. Tomazik, because she gave me a great segue there about sort of the press and the PR, and one of the things that I try to be careful to do is, you know, we get fixated on these rankings, you know, this school is ranked X, why isn't this school ranked Y? One thing that has occurred over the past several years is that our APL offerings and opportunities have increased dramatically; we're up 45% across the district. Those are oftentimes a significant component of these rankings, and in New Jersey Monthly's ranking, which, you know, is questionable in some aspects and spot-on in others, what we saw is with the dramatic increase in the number of advanced placement courses that students are taking, Marlboro High School catapulted into the top 10 in the state, which is a nice honor, and I think one thing that the rankings did appropriately this year is they pulled out county vocational systems from public systems that have a selective criteria and an entrance criteria on the students they take. So it's a nice honor for Marlboro High School certainly to land at number nine; I don't think, it's not rocket science how you move up in some of these rankings, you know, there's certain things that we believe strongly as a district, we're going to do to improve the overall academic environment for all students, and I think that some of the residual impact of that is potentially moving up in some of these rankings, and that happened to be the case this year with Marlboro High School that landed at number nine, which is a nice honor.
Okay. So, yeah. Do we ever, does our supervisors or administration or staff or teachers ever evaluate or go to the open houses of the county schools, just to see what they offer, you know, if they're compatible to what our learning centers are, I mean, we all know our learning centers are wonderful, but the county schools, especially the Biotech, is fairly new; Allied has been around, High Tech's been around, but I'm just curious, and then of course with, in law, the communications, I'm just curious if we've ever evaluated, and I guess the best time to go is see, would be an open house, because you have the options opening in, like any other parent would go in, and just see what their, their presentation is.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at those over the years; I mean, I went myself into some of those buildings during the school day to see exactly what they do or don't do. You know, what it comes down to ultimately is, you don't find anything dramatically different over there in terms of what they do versus what we do in terms of the onboarding process for potential students and parents. I think what we, one thing that we, we've probably learned from some other successful places is to make sure, as Mr. Tomazik noted, to start tapping into our alumni bank and our current students to really build those bridges with the programs, because, you know, the students want to hear it from them more than they want to hear it from, from the adults. But there's also, when we're, when we're highlighting our programs, there's not the same degree to specificity because we are comprehensive high schools, so we, you know, we go through the experience, the high school experiences, what a student in one of our learning centers is going to get versus a very specialized program somewhere else, so we also focus on, when we're, we're focused on that aspect in addition to the program itself, because it's really the whole package, and, you know, even, I mentioned earlier, you know, fundamentally, some of the rankings that come out with high schools across the state, when you have a, you know, a 600-student high school, the offerings that can be offered versus one of our high schools pales in comparison, so the rankings, to me, is a little skewered to begin with, but, you know, I think what we, what we really bring to bear is the high school experience, but yes, you know, do we go check out what other places are doing? Absolutely.
So I believe when we, when the Biotech opened up, I think that, that school did take people that were definitely interested in ours, such as, you know, MedSci or Science and Engineering or whatever, some of those students, I know for a fact, my decision I'm going there, but I know it's what, one, is it one or two students per township?
No, that's, that's not how it works, because what, and I don't mean to interrupt you myself, but how it works, which, you know, to me is, you know, you can draw, you draw your own conclusions, is they're only obligated to take one student from each township, each municipality. After that is a blind, you know, it's a process of an entrance criterion examination, so, you know, I think in the county voc, there's a significantly higher proportion of students who went to the K Eights in Marlboro and Holmdale than any other two other, than any two other municipalities in the county; Colts Neck is probably a top three or four as well, so they, in terms of the representation from across the county, it's very much skewered because there's, there's only a requirement to take one, one student from that municipality, and then it's a process of criteria-based entrance, so it's an interesting setup.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before you do that, if I could, just a couple notes.
In the back of the room, yellow piece of paper, there's an addendum, I have an additional addendum, which I'll read into the record, falls under F-17, Approval of Increment Withholding, whereas it has been determined that employee number 8063 has repeatedly acted in an unsatisfactory manner, and that same provides a sufficient basis to withhold her increment pursuant to NJSA 18A 29-14. It is hereby resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent, that employee 8063, employment and adjustment increments for the 2015-16 school year shall be withheld, and it is further resolved that the superintendent will provide employee 8063 with written notice of this action within 10 days pursuant to NJSA 18A 29-14. In addition to that, a couple modifications of existing resolutions under F-3, Approval of Appointments, the start date for Teresa Dodd's should read September 2nd through, and that runs through January 28th, and also on F-14, under Approval of Analysis for Robert Raz, the change is, it should read from Freehold, I'm sorry, it should read from Colts Neck High School to Manalapan High School, currently reads from... from Colts Neck High School to Manalapan High School. Currently reads from Freehold Township High School to Manalapan High School. So Colts Neck to Manalapan, those are the only two changes.
Okay. Public participation, I don't have anyone signed up, but does anyone need to speak? I'd like to make a motion to take the whole agenda.
Yes, of course.
I need a motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Any objections? Questions?
Mr. Assitola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes, except J1, I abstain on anything that goes to me.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutara?
Yes.
Mr. Mazick?
Yes.
That's all.
Any, all business? Any new business? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?